Welcome to the regular meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. It appears that we have a quorum, and first item would be to look at the minutes and approve the minutes from the last meeting. Anybody have any comments, questions?
A motion we approve as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries and the minutes are approved from the last meeting, September 16th. The next item is new business requesting to add a railing to the side porch of a house at 443 East College Street. Dana Richardson, Robert, is there anything you'd like to say about that?
Chairman Backland, this house is located on the north side of East College Street. It's about three houses from Highland Avenue, according to the National Register of Historic Places nomination form, it was, the house was erected around 1910 in a vernacular style of architecture with a classical wraparound porch, shed dormer, and a steep gabled porch. It's one and a half stories with clapboard exterior covering, and it's a contributing structure in the North Manny Avenue Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicant, Mr. Richardson, was notified by his insurance agent that he's got a piece of income-producing property, and that because of the height of the porch from the distance from the grade, at grade from the surface of the ground, it is such that his insurance rates are going to be increasing unless he takes some steps to mitigate the problem. And the front part of the house, as you can see from the picture on the TV monitor, it kind of slopes down to the west, and what he's planning on doing in the front is he's going to bring in some dirt and raise the grade of the soil up to a level that will not, will be noncompliant with the insurance company's rates or the regulations. On the west side of the house, let me move to another picture here. As you can see in this picture here, it's a little close to the property line, and he won't be able to do the dirt work raising the grade on this side of the house, so he's proposing to have some kind of railing on this west side. And in your agenda package, you can see the materials that he's proposing to use for the west side only. Now, he's not really coming to the commission for, to take action today, he's just trying to get an idea of what is going to be okayed by the commission, so he's looking for some guidance. He submitted his proposal with the railing, and I think he can explain the type railing that it is. I think it's a vinyl, some kind of a plastic type railing, and he would like to use this on the west side only. So if you have any questions for me or the applicant, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any comments or questions from anyone?
Yeah, I have a question, Dana. How much on the west side would you have to raise the landscaping?
To make that compliant with the 30-inch maximum from the top porch to the grade would require that that would be raised approximately eight inches. The entire frontage along the porch is right at or under the 30-inch, and as such, I guess I'm coming to y'all for two reasons this evening. Number one would be the question of only putting the railing on the side versus the entire perimeter, and number two would be the potential for various materials. And one of the things that I was bringing to you was PVC is a potential option, and it may still be that based on the spans between the columns and so forth, that wood may be the, ultimately the better option for it, but I was just wanting to see what may be permissible or allowable in your eyes so that I could move forward and make it a formal application. But on the west corner that you're referring to, the grade, the grade there would only have to be for about three or four feet because it slopes, would only have to be raised about three or four inches, so that would be easily done around the frontage. It's just the very west side of the porch that would be an issue.
Well, I guess, you know, personally, I'd rather see no railing all the way around.
As would I.
Because I think it's going to look a little strange just to have a railing on the west side. But if you've, you know, if you've gone through all the options of landscaping that west side and none is feasible, then I guess we have to go with a railing of some sort, and if we do, I would prefer a wood over a vinyl.
That wouldn't really be, let me say something about the west side, too. The west side is pretty much hidden by an adjacent fence and also the house from the road, so there'd be not really a whole lot of it visible. And personally, I like the open on the frontage on the porch and so forth, and looking for a little feedback from y'all on that issue.
Mr. Chairman, I applaud the idea of raising the soil there because I hate, too, adding features like that, and it's an easy way to like integrate a handicap ramp, for instance, into a facility because once you flatten it out by raising the grade, you don't have to put handrails at a certain slope for handicap ramps. And this is another way to eliminate the issue of the handrail. I guess my question is, eight inches of topsoil on the west side, what is the concern of not putting the eight inches? Is it because of trying to maintain that slope to the fence, or is it runoff from the roof onto your neighbor's property, which that can be a problem legally as well? But what is the, what is the difficulty in adding eight inches up against the west side to then get rid of your rail? Because I would imagine the cost of the PVC and the dirt would be fairly similar.
It may be. I think this is more of a physical issue to where it's not only got to be above the grade, but you have to have 30, I think 36 inches minimum amount that's flat, and I've only got probably about seven or eight feet to the fence, so by the time you bring that out, and remember the grade's running away from you as you go, so by the time I get out to the flat area, that I would have a very large slope into the adjoining fence. So it's a little bit of a physical issue with the distance and the height.
It's the, it's the change of the slope then from the flat part that you would have to add to, down to the fence that concerns you as far as maintenance and erosion and this kind of thing?
Yes.
I have to agree, as far as the PVC fencing, I'm not a fan of it. I mean, it's, you see it sold, you know, everywhere today, and if you notice, too, when you see it and you drive by, a lot of it has this green algae on it, and you have to power wash it from time to time, whereas painted surfaces tend to get mildew, that's sort of a black film on it, and I think the black is more pleasing than the green algae look, I'll at least say that. But what is the spacing between the columns, would you guess?
The, and quite frankly, they all vary. Working from front or from back to front, between column one and two is 90 inches, two to three is 105, and three to four is 85 inches, so there's no consistency in these.
Railing systems by code have to have a certain lateral force that can withstand horizontally into it, so I don't know that this PVC railing would meet that requirement because you probably have to have a horizontal post in between to support some of those links to meet those codes. So I would, you probably would need to get an engineer involved to actually help design that system, or get the systems designer, manufacturer to help you with that, but I think you're going to have to have some intermediate post in some of those longer spans to actually help support that. And it looks like you have a concrete slab, is that the case for the porch floor?
No.
It's wood?
It's hardwood.
So you could, you could attach to that surface, but it's without, just being topically attached, the post, it's not a really good connection, it really ought to go through the floor to the framing to support it. But my concern is just the length of it and the code issue of the lateral force hitting it, it has to be engineered.
And I agree that you would have to go down vertically with that instead of just top mounting it, because you would, you would have an issue with trying to top mount it and the lateral push against it. And that would apply whether it's wood or PVC.
It would be. I think the wood, you might be able to get a longer span perhaps than the PVC, but I think that's just up to the engineer, the manufacturer of the system.
Mr. Richardson, the columns are wooden, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, they're wooden fluted columns.
Yeah, I'd like to say I definitely don't think you should go with the vinyl.
Okay.
Not only is it different than the other materials used on the house, but it tends to have a shininess to it, which makes it look vinyl instead of wooden.
And I don't, I don't quite frankly have a strong feeling or opinion one way or the other. It's all about, some of it's about trade-off, it's long-term maintenance versus, and quite frankly, the PVC vinyl would be more expensive on the front end for installation. The only thing that I think we all realize is a lot of the porches, once you put those in wood and put the spindles in and stuff over a number of years, you have a tendency to rot out on the bottom, and that's even if you rake them back, so. But, I mean, that's something just I've had to deal with from a maintenance perspective, not a huge issue.
Have you considered wrought iron?
I have considered that. I think that the, that would be substantially more expensive to do probably than the wood.
And also aluminum, prefinished aluminum railings? We've approved that before.
And I have not, I'm not pricing on a foot basis, but if that's something that this board would be willing to entertain, then I'd be glad to move one step further before the application and price them that out.
I guess my thoughts are I think the metal would withstand the code issues, the lateral forces better than perhaps certainly the vinyl, I would think, and I would think the wood, that, you know, it might for longevity also be an issue, then you want to worry about rot. Of course, you could always select wood materials that have natural decay resistance like cedar or some other materials to help support you in that, but I think one of the reasons for like the metal as a potential option, I think that the size of the members could be smaller and still withstand the loads that are required by code. And I'm looking for the smallest railing cross-section and member and all of that, you still have to have that four-inch sphere issue between the ballisters, but trying to minimize the visual impact, I think, would be a big positive for this. So that's why I'm suggesting any other materials for everyone's consideration, maybe the metal might be the smallest. It might be the most expensive, but over time, it may actually, the life expectancy, it might serve you well.
Okay. But in y'all's opinion, would the three options be something that would be permissible? And then just look at which ones and discuss this maybe a little later in the formal application? Whether it be the coated aluminum, wrought iron, or typical standard wood?
Correct. I personally, speaking for myself, I would agree that those three options are appropriate. The vinyl, I think, we're just trying to limit the amount of vinyl that comes into the district just because it's just, it's not a historic material.
Sure, understood.
I think the wrought iron, if it's painted, are you thinking black or white? You ever thought about it?
I think either one would be fine.
It just seems like it doesn't, to me, a black wrought iron doesn't seem to fit the character of the house, but.
Personally, I think that if that was an option I was willing to pursue, either way, wood, I think we're looking at painting it white anyway.
White, yeah, okay.
I think at any point, whatever's put there is going to look like it doesn't belong. So I was trying to minimize the cross-section of it, that's the reason I offered it. I mean, I think anything would be, it's unfortunate, but that's your insurance company requiring it. And that sort of trumps some visual issues that we have because we can't let, you know, overrule them.
But you only need it on the, on the west side.
Just because of the height issue.
Yeah.
Yes.
And is it from that front left column all the way back, or does it start somewhere back from the front corner?
No, it's a, it's a left front corner all the way around to the west and the north side, a little small north side. It's basically the end of the porch.
So you're talking about this column to that column on the front, on the north side?
Yes.
And then all the way in the west? That I didn't pick up on.
Well, I mean, it's, it's down, it's down parallel to the west side, and then it makes a turn, which would be about six feet to tie back into the house on the backside of it.
Oh, it's, it's, okay.
Yeah.
The north, not the south side, the north side. I can't, my directions mixed up again. Yes, the backside, that's fine.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson knows so much about architecture and has done so well, you know, with his suggestions. I wondered, you know, your first suggestion was the, just the dirt, the dirt. Is there some way you could put a boundary up? You know, I'm not saying railroad tie.
Retaining wall of some sort.
Retaining wall, yeah. And then, I mean, would that look better?
You could, you could landscape it with like railroad ties to get your three feet, and then have a drop that you can mow on either side. You could like come in at one corner and go up onto the level part, and then go down below that landscape tie, railroad tie sort of look to mow against the fence. You could even cover that retaining wall like section, and we're only talking probably two railroad ties at the most. You could even disguise it with plants or something.
And it's not only the side grade, but if you do that, you have to tie back the grades all the way to tie back into the north and south side, too. And of course, in doing that, and I've looked at that as an option, what you end up with is three vertical walls in very close proximity. One would be the side of the porch, one would be the side of the retaining wall, and then adjacent to that would be a vertical fence on the next door property. So I would end up with all those from a maintenance standpoint, and that's what I was trying to avoid. It would end up being a, by the time you tied it back into the south side and north side, a fairly good grading job to be able to do that.
Yeah, I didn't even know if people still used railroad ties or if you would even say the word.
Well, you can get concrete block sections that you can stack and do that as well, they're retaining walls that you just, you can lift a section at a time and put in place, but it's the issue that you have seven, six to seven feet of side yard.
Right.
Because he would, then he would have a three-foot section that's high and immediately drop, and you can maybe get a push mower on each of those two stretches, but you couldn't get a big mower in there.
Yeah, the folks that mow my yard, I'm not sure they have a small push mower.
They want to get in and out quick, yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
If there's not, I appreciate that. That gives me some guidance, and I will go back and look at the options that we discussed and come back to you with the formal application, and I certainly do appreciate your time and insight into this, so thank you very much.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need a motion then, so you're just going to come back.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, proposed amendments to the rules of procedure and design guidelines. Planning staff and legal department are the applicants.
Yes, Chairman Backland, you may remember several years ago, we took a review of all of our documents and made some proposals for some amendments to the rules of procedure and the design guidelines, and we actually looked at the application and the brochures. In so doing, during the review and the corrections and the review and corrections, the planning department and the legal department kept making changes, and then we wanted to make some more changes. And the changes that we made didn't affect the guidelines, the design guidelines much. In fact, we didn't make any changes to the design guidelines, it was to the rules of procedure, and they mostly had to do with the, some reference to the Tennessee Code. And for that reason, we brought both of them back. The design guidelines, I brought copies of the ones that were marked through, and then the finished copy for both the rules of procedure and the design guidelines, just to show you what the changes were, and gave you some time to take a look at it. And we, we were told that we need to bring it back to the Historic Commission for the changes that were made to the rules of procedure, so that's why it's come back for us to take another review. The next step will be to bring it for the city council for adoption. So if you have any questions, the legal department and myself will be happy to answer any that you have.
Any thoughts or?
Mr. Chairman, you know, we did go through this a while back, and I'm embarrassed, I was sort of spearheading this at one point when I was the chair, but I, in going through this and looking at what was proposed and how it was modified to the, to the cleaned-up example, I'm embarrassed to say I found a few more items I'd love to throw out there for the group to consider if that's, if that's appropriate, or I can hush.
That's here, Jim.
I think that's what this is for.
Okay. The first, the first section is the design guidelines, and I'm looking at the marked-up sets, for instance, on page two. If everybody finds it, where there's Roman numeral three, East Main Street Historic District was zoned, now the district. In the first main paragraph, the second sentence, it says, "Architectural styles span the spectrum from freddling Greek revival in your proposing design through Italianate, Queen Anne, Mediterranean revival, Tudor, colonial revival styles." I would get rid of the word "design," it's in the middle of the sentence, I don't know what it adds to that, they're all, they're all styles. I would get rid of the word "design." Following this on page five, under Roman numeral six, item B, general principles, it's a consistency thing on this item. On the second paragraph under six B, second paragraph, "Proposals for exterior work to be done on facades visible from front and street-related elevations." On page seven and page 11, it did use "visible from public right-ofway." So it's inconsistent that we're getting rid of it there and then using it later. So if you look on page seven, item three, porches, "Then closing of front and side porch is visible from the public right-ofway is inappropriate." So I don't know why we would get rid of that phraseology there and change to something else. I think it all should be viewed from the public right-ofway, that's what we've always ruled by. And so I would, I would recommend that you leave public right-ofway.
Just leave it in under six B in that second paragraph?
Yes.
Five B. Five B, Robert.
Six B.
Six B.
Six B. On page five. On page five.
Roman numeral six.
Six B.
All right.
I just think for consistency, and I can show you on page 11 where it is, too, but just I think it should be consistent. On that third paragraph of that same page.
Is it what page you're on now?
I'm on page five still.
Okay, page five, okay.
Third paragraph, six B, third paragraph. "The removal or alteration of any historic material, comma, or," I think you should write the word "or," distinctive architectural features should be avoided.
I'm sorry, Jim, what were you saying?
Six B on page five. Third paragraph, second sentence.
Yes.
"The removal or alteration of any historic material, comma, or distinctive architectural features, comma, should be avoided." I think the word "or" is not there.
Mm-hmm.
If y'all want to fire me now, I'm going to keep going. Keep going. We're glad you're so thorough.
Well, I only read the marked-up parts, the black stuff I didn't read.
Let me come back up just a second. On the second paragraph there, does that read right to say, "Proposals for exterior work to be done on facades visible from the right-ofway, front, and street-related elevation?" Somehow that doesn't seem to follow me.
Basically, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the phrase, I wouldn't use the section that says "front and street-related elevations," I would just say, "Proposals for exterior work to be done on facades visible from the public right-ofway shall be more carefully reviewed than our other facades." And that's what we've always done.
And just remove "front and street-related elevations."
Yes. The public right-ofway then tells you it's the front or the sides. Then switching, if you're ready.
Yep.
Page nine, Roman, not, number seven, material. Go to the third paragraph from the bottom. I'm the one that I think brought this up, but I wanted to add something to that. Painting of brick or stone, unless originally, I want to add, or currently painted, is inappropriate. So if you have painted brick, you ought to have the right to repaint it. But you don't, we don't, the point is, we don't want to paint over natural brick now or stone, but if it's currently painted, I think you should be allowed to repaint it. That's me speaking.
I think that's probably what we probably intended, but it doesn't really read like that, okay.
In the next paragraph below, where we added, "Cement fiberboard siding similar in texture, size, and weather to the original material may be approved." I just want to make sure we're all saying, we say, "Original siding shall not be covered or replaced with material of texture not original to the building, however, we're allowing this cement fiberboard." When you put the word "texture" and you say "original," an original material would probably be smooth and not, because Hardy Flank, for instance, has a smooth board and a textured board that looks like old paint, or it's, you know, rough wood. We have typically ruled that we don't want you to, people to put in the textured Hardy board or cement fiberboard, but the smooth because that would have been original. Is that what we're saying? Are we allowing it to be interpreted as each, on individual case?
Well, I think similar in texture is, is going to allow us, you know, if, if the texture of the replacement was smooth, then we can go with smooth if it's similar, and if it happened to be a rougher board, then it would cover it, so I think you're, I think we're okay there.
And I don't disagree, I just wanted to bring that up because I remember we've had some cases where we, they wanted to put a textured cement fiberboard, and we said no. We wanted it smooth, and I don't disagree at all with you, it leaves some latitude to each case. It could be like a unfinished raw cedar timber that was never smooth, and they want to replace it or something, and they want to put back a rough one, I'm all for that. But I just wanted to acknowledge that we have ruled from here that it must be a smooth one in certain cases. I just don't remember one that we allowed one that was rough.
The phrase "may be approved" implies that it may or may not be approved. So, I mean, it gives us the leeway in either case.
Yeah, and I don't disagree at all, I just wanted to raise the issue is the only reason. On page 11, item seven B, this is where it talks about the second paragraph, "The facades visible from the public right-ofway," there's the consistency that I was also referring to. And that's all I found in that document, but I had some in the second.
Take out front and street-related elevations?
You do.
No, this one.
Not on that one?
We're going to take out front and street-related elevations on that, yeah.
On page 11, I think, yeah, I think we can there as well, just say, "The facades visible from the public right-ofway."
Yeah.
"Of proposals for new construction shall be more carefully reviewed than other facades."
Okay.
I don't, I think with the consistency, you eliminate potential for it being misinterpreted in one area but not the other.
I agree completely.
Yeah. And that's all I had in that section, but there was in the rules of procedure, a couple, well, actually, I think it's two, maybe two items, whenever the board is ready. On the top of that page, certificate of appropriateness, about one, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down, it says, "Review is initiated when a person planning to do work on a property." I'd like to add the word "or the city" because this gets into our brick sidewalks that we struggled with.
Yes.
So when the city works within the area, I think the city should come to us as well.
Yeah, because we've already been through that, and let's not back down on that.
Yes.
Might depend on the definition of "person," I mean, because we've had schools as well, I mean, that have done work, central.
That's, yeah, I would agree, the central middle school, but the city changing the sidewalks and us losing, getting upset about the brick pavers and all that, I just like, the idea of a person to me is too much like the owner of a property, whereas, or an individual of family, but not the other groups, like you say, the city, the.
Churches.
Churches, schools, you could say when an owner planning to do work.
Or just leave, "Review is initiated when work on a property located in historic district."
That would be appropriate.
On any property.
Any property. That's what I'm looking for, anybody who comes.
Any property.
Who's in the district. Robert, I think that's a very good suggestion.
Okay, so Robert, how's it going to read, initiated, when?
When work.
When work.
Any work or just work, either one? When work? I think work is fine, when work on property located in historic district.
So needs to say probably when work is planned?
Yes.
On property?
I don't want to lose, like you say, Linda, what we've already tried to accomplish on stuff within the right-ofway.
And the fiasco with the soccer field, the chain link. And then the fiasco with the soccer field, the chain-like fence.
When the board is ready on page 11, I had another.
There's something wrong with this sentence. Review is initiated when work, when a person or the city...
It doesn't have a...
A person is coming out.
Okay, when work is planned on property located in a historic district applies for a building? Because that's...
A building relocation or demolition permit, it must say something like, then you must come before the commission. It has a, the first part of the sentence, but the latter half is missing.
Yeah, but the sentence...
Is applied for?
But the work, when work, work doesn't apply for, when work is planned on property...
The review is initiated when work, work... When work is planned within the historic district for...
The rest of the sentence, it works better to rework, the person planning, to rework that part, but just doesn't read right yet.
I think the review is initiated when work is planned on property located in historic district for building relocation or demolition permits.
So the applies?
Take that.
Should come out.
Well, but it's, it's the application for the permit is one of the things that triggers.
Yeah.
Yes, we can't do...
The review.
Well, let's see, let's rethink this.
And of course, this, Scott and Tom, the city working on sidewalks, for instance, is not going to apply for a building permit to do that.
I would, then, then... When work is planned.
So property in historic district.
Uh huh.
And leave building relocation or demolition permit out.
I just said, the review is initiated when, when planning...
When work is planned.
To do work is located in historic district, period.
Yeah.
I think simplifying the sentence to the real kernel of it is probably warranted here.
The review is initiated when work...
Is planned.
Planned.
In historic district, period.
That covers everything.
It covers everything and everything.
Review is initiated after the application is received. Someone might plan work and not apply.
True, but then he said the city too, does not initiate a permit.
Okay, I see what you mean, yeah, so you have to work with it.
But we're saying here, if you go on, that they do need it, we're saying paving sidewalks, if work in the historic...
Indeed, I caught that too, Linda, I just wanted to go ahead and put it out there. If we're going to say a person, I wanted to make sure it's the city.
Could say a person or entity, you know, an entity, organization, government.
Owner.
Owner, yeah, lots of ways of phrasing it to capture all of the...
All, yeah.
Yeah, or entity.
People who, people and organizations who may do the work. I'm sure that David can come up with the correct legal description, correct?
Well, it, the thing is, we can, we can, we can put this on paper, that we want, that I think it should be in here so that the, when this is approved by the, first the planning department and then the city council. City council, that they realize that we do expect the city or the county to get approval. How can we, how can we put some teeth in this?
And Linda, I would add to where you noted about sidewalks, says, when it is visible from the public right-of-way, it ought to be also in the public right-of-way. Wrong means you're looking at the yards.
Yes.
I would think also in the public right-of-way.
Include.
So that...
It's just ought to be within the district, period. Would you like to draft a possible solution, David, and come back to us, or do we need to have this answered today?
We've been working on this for, what, three years?
Yeah.
I don't know that another month will, it's kind of like a couple other of my projects.
I understand.
Yeah, let Robert and I take a look at that and see if we can't come up with something.
I mean, you understand the intent, what we're trying to do, we all do, we're trying to wordsmith it, and maybe simplification is best, but I just think we're saying that any work where it either requires a permit, or where the city or any other entity who does not require a permit is planning to do work, that they come in here and seek approval.
Yes. And somehow, when that's presented for them to okay it, that needs to be pointed out, I believe, so that they won't just pass over that and not give it any thought that, yes, the city and the county are accountable, just like a private individual is. What else?
I have just two small items, one on page 11, the item that was E that's been removed. I guess I question why. Why was that item removed? Can the person not be represented by an agent or attorney, given them right to act as the applicant's stead? I mean, can they not come up? What was the reason for taking it out?
I think that was a duplication, but...
Like I said, I only read the ones that were marked up, I'm embarrassed to say that, but if it is duplication, by all means, let's take it out, but if it's not, I think we ought to leave it in.
On page six, number three, I think it's number three.
Well, I guess then if it is a duplicate, take it out, if it's not, doesn't it seem reasonable to leave it in?
Well, okay, the bottom of page five, I guess, "Any party may appear in person or by agent or attorney at the meeting."
I'm sorry, David, where?
Bottom of page five. The last item.
Okay, okay, thank you, I apologize.
Not a problem.
Then on my last item, it's just a typo on page 12, item J, middle of the page, "Both the Building and Coats Department and Planning Department inspect work, ongoing work in cases of noncompliance with the approved plans." It's just spelling.
Page 12.
Approved yet?
Yeah, yeah. That's all I had.
That's a good catch.
I rarely catch them because I do them all the time, the spell check doesn't always catch them.
Robert and I will work on, issue on paragraph nine. See if we can come up with a fix for that.
You think we'd be able to see it in our next meeting, whenever that might be? That'd be great.
I sure hope so.
Any other comments on that? There's no need for a vote on that now, we'll have another chance to look at it, and...
Right.
And it will require a vote on our part before it goes back to the council?
Right.
Any other reports or other business, Robert?
I don't have any.
I do appreciate mailing out of the guidelines to all of the homeowners in the district.
Yes.
I might add that I did get several phone calls asking whether do I need to come for the commission or don't I, and they thought it was real nice to get a letter and...
I would suggest that maybe we consider doing that every couple of years anyway, or maybe annually, I'm not sure what the cost is, but, and certainly, another way to do that would be, if you don't want to, if people use email, I mean, I think I'll probably quit using email in a few years, but when my third or fourth email box gets full, but email might be a cheaper way to communicate with people, but maybe less effective.
Yeah.
Any other business?
Has everybody got all their education now?
They don't have them here.
Oh, they don't have them?
No.
We do need education, it might be worth having, you know, someone coming, come down from the State Historic Preservation Office again.
I'm not required by the state.
It doesn't hurt for us to actually read and learn things every now and then.
That'd be great.
I think I included all commission members for, what was it, the Alliance, to start getting subscriptions to, to the Alliance.
A journal, is it, or a newsletter or something like that?
We did that a couple of months ago, I think, and I don't know if it comes out every other month, or, I don't know if you started getting them or not, evidently you haven't.
I don't recall seeing it, was it on his email or paper?
Paper.
Okay. And it would come to each member by mail?
Right.
Well, that's good, that's great.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah, okay. And then again, just a reminder that the Murfreesboro Long Range Plan 2035 is, I'm getting emails asking me to comment, I don't know if you've heard about it, but the city is undergoing a long-range planning process, and certainly that would be one avenue by which we could share our thoughts about historic preservation in the city, and the possibility, for example, of establishing other historic districts. We've talked about that in the past, you know, Manny Avenue is a National Register District, Main Street's a National Register District, and certainly there are other parts of town that, where the houses in the neighborhoods are more than 50 years old and would be eligible to be considered for listing on the National Register.
That reminds me, whatever happened to Van's...
Van West?
Yeah, Van West's part in getting his students to do some canvassing for us?
As far as I know, it hasn't gone anywhere, just due to the lack of funding. But that may be something that can be done in the future.
Yeah.
Because I know they're a valuable asset just right at home here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's too bad, because I thought we had him going.
Motion to adjourn from anyone?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See you next month.